Go ahead.
Are you ready, James, or no?
Yep, go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. James, would you call the roll, please?
Yep, Kathy Conroy.
Here.
Jack McCann.
You're gonna have to turn your audio up, James. We can't hear you.
Jack McCann.
Better than that. You gotta turn your audio up.
There's an issue with my connection here.
Okay. That was good.
Okay, Catherine Conroy.
Here.
Jack McCann.
Was here.
Jack, are you there? John Normile.
Here.
Mark Pelosi.
Here.
Katie McLaren.
Okay, so we have four members present. The first case is old business. PLZBA 2021-01 Taylor Apartments Redevelopment Phase 1, 125 River Street. Troy Housing Authority and Penrose Development seek area variances for setback, density, and parking to redevelop the Taylor Apartments. And we've had the discussion, the public portion is closed, and now it's up to us to vote. So would someone like to make a motion? Can we do them all on the same motion? Andy?
Yes, you could. And let me just add, Madam Chair, that the reason you didn't act previously is because the planning commission was the seeker lead agency. They have since issued a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so you now can act upon the variances.
Okay. So.
I just wanted to note for the record, Katie McLaren has joined us. To add to what Andy was just saying as well, we don't have to make, we're not going to make our own secret determination.
So what we have to do is vote on the area variance for the setback, density, and parking?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right. John, or Mark, or Katie, do you want to make, and I don't know what happened to Jack, but.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Okay, so he is present, James. For the record.
Yeah, I got him.
And let's have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
I just gotta do secret. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
You're not doing a secret.
I have to do secret. I just, okay.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Okay, in regards to PLZBA 2021-001, based upon the record and everything that was written into it at the prior meetings, I would like to make a motion that we approve the area variances for setback, for density, and for parking for the Taylor Apartments Redevelopment Phase 1. The benefit cannot be achieved by other means that are feasible. There's a limited footprint. An undesirable change will not be created in the character of the neighborhood. There will be no detriment to nearby properties. Request is not substantial. It's replacing a building that's, I believe, larger than the one that's proposed. The request will not have adverse physical or environmental effects. The difficulty is not self-created in that they're redeveloping a site that's already been built on and making it fit in better in the neighborhood. So for those reasons, and like I said, for everything previously entered into the record, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jack McCann seconds. And on the motion, Mark Pelosi?
Yes, I vote in favor.
Okay, Jack McCann?
Yes, in favor.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
John Normile?
Yes.
And Kathy Conroy, yes. So the motion passes. Now on to new business. PLZBA 2021-009, an area variance for 391 Second Street. Sophia Sabaya of Aztec seeks a variance for a parking deficiency at an existing structure. Three spaces are required and zero are proposed. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Okay, hi. Do you want to introduce yourself, please, for the record, and tell us what you want to do and why you need the variance, please?
Sure, sure. So I'm Sophia Vaztek. This is Sam Torres. We're the new owners of 391 Second Street, which is a former Ukrainian hall. We are planning to convert the space into a single-family residence with a home occupation. We're both musicians, so we will use it for our work as musicians. We're asking for the area variance because the green space is very small compared to the lot size in the building. It's already under the 25% required minimum green space, and that would be the only area that we could put the off-street parking. So we're just, we're hoping to keep that as green space and park on the street, so. Oh, and I guess the other main thing is that we're, since we're converting it to a single-family residence, the previous use was as an assembly hall, which was a much higher-density use, and they also did not have off-street parking. So I think that the change will actually be beneficial to the block and the neighborhood.
So when you have these people in for the, for recording or producing or whatever it is you're doing, are they expected to stay for any length of time, or how does that work? I mean, are they gonna add to the parking?
So the main, the main people that will be coming clients are students, and they would be coming, students of mine, and they would be coming for like half hour to hour lessons. Sam's work is mostly remote, so he, yeah, doesn't usually have clients coming. So that's really the main, the main use, yeah.
So basically, the main people who would have cars there for any length of time would be you and Sam, if in fact you have, even have two cars, I don't know.
Yeah, we actually only have one car.
There you go. So now you're down to one. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Seems rather straightforward. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? This isn't it, is it behind, you're not sitting in there now, are you?
No, no, this is.
A lovely staircase for the. Okay, so if we have no further issues, there's no point, there's nobody here to speak in opposition, I ask that, right?
Right.
So if there's, if no one has any questions, by all means, if you do, speak up. That's an area, any sort of an area up, like up in Lansenberg, or any place where you just find your spot on the street, and there you go. And there's no reason to think that you're gonna be creating any sort of an issue if your, your clients are only there for a short period of time.
Yeah.
I agree. And my thought is that, you know, like she said, it's the, the intended use to the building would, would have much more of an impact as far as parking than their use.
Right. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm always happy to see a building like that be used, turned into a residence. I think it's a great use of the building, and, and there isn't probably a lot of use for it as an assembly hall any further. So rather, I mean, I think it's wonderful. So that being said, does any, would anybody like to make a motion?
Okay, I guess I will. I would make a motion in favor of area variance, P as in Paul, LZBA 2021-009, for the three spaces necessary in this particular case.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And on the motion, John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Jack McCann?
Yes, to approve.
Mark, Mark Pelosi?
Yes, in favor.
And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Are we not doing any secrets? I missed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to do secret for this, because it's not type 2.
I didn't see secret. You know why? Because, yeah, okay, I didn't print out the staff report. Okay, I'm sorry, Katie.
Katie, I, I agree with you. I'm unable to find anything on a type 2 list that we could plug a parking deficiency into. So unfortunately, I think we have to do a secret whenever we're granting a parking variance.
Okay.
That's fine. I just, without the staff report in front of me, I went out of my head. Go ahead, Katie.
So, Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2021-009, Steph recommends the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available, how much to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause environmental impact.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, now we're legit, right? All right, thanks, Katie. You can ju, just jump in the next time around here, too, if we need one. Next case, PLZBA 2021-00, I would presume 10, James, instead of the XX?
That's correct.
Okay, special use permit at 1700 Second Street. Joe Johnson seeks a special use permit to convert the first floor of an existing structure into a residence. Mark, I think you have something you want to.
Yes, if Mr. Johnson's on the call, I just want to confirm that it is the same Joe Johnson, although I do believe it is. Mr. Johnson, are you there?
Ah, yes, I'm here.
Mr. Johnson, did I previously represent you briefly on a matter in Saratoga County, specifically Waterford, back in 2018? At Ianello Anderson?
Yes, yes, Water.
Yep.
Okay, yes, he does.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So I'll put on the record for everyone that I previously represented Mr. Johnson on a small matter in Saratoga County, specifically the municipality of Waterford. It started and concluded in 2018. I don't currently represent him on anything, and I do not believe that my prior representation of Mr. Johnson will have any bearing on my ability to be fair, objective, or impartial on his application tonight.
Okay. Wait a minute, I'm messed up here on my Zoom meeting. Something happened for me. Oh, there we go, your bar back, Mark. Okay, so then we're all set to go forward. Mr. Johnson, would you like to explain to us what you want to do, please?
Ah, yes, so currently, right now, we have a two-story structure that is, the second floor has been residential for some time. The first floor was a prior, I think from history, is an Elks or a Moose Lodge, I believe. And it's been long, long since boarded up, a vacant building with, you know, plans coming forward. There's a big, nice big red X on it. So we're looking to renovate the first floor into residential. The neighborhood is largely residential in that, that particular area. So it seemed like it was just kind of a fit versus trying to go back with a store, a storefront.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? I know that, I remember, as a matter of fact, I think they came to the zoning board the last time they put, they did something with that building with the Elks or the Moose or somebody. And now it's all boarded up. Are you gonna keep the second floor? So what's your plan? You to rent out both floors, or what?
Ah, yes, that would be the tentative plan, would to be residential second floor as an apartment downstairs, as an apartment. And then we have an extensive renovation budget, which is gonna be now new siding and obviously a lot more windows than what was there prior for the club, so.
Take the wooden planks off of the windows, and you're heading in the right direction. Kind of unattractive there now, so anything you do, I would think, would be an addition to the neighborhood.
Yeah, we're definitely looking forward to, you know, getting some nice new siding on there and cleaning it up.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the house next door is nice, it's right on the alley, yes?
Yes, it's between the Fifth and Sixth Avenue, so it's on the alley, right on the alley.
Alley, and then there's a nice house next door on the other side of the alley, so it would be very nice to see that improved. So does, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, do we have any, any observations or questions from the board?
I just think it's fantastic anytime we get rid of one of those big red Xs.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. And that's truly, well, they're all unattractive, but that is a really unattractive building right now, so. That'd be great. So do we have a motion then, if no one has anything further to add?
I'll do secret first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2021-10, I ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available, upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, now we'll take a motion on the application itself.
Madam Chair, if I may just jump in and add that they're seeking two variances. They're seeking a, an area variance for parking, where four required, zero are proposed, and they're also seeking an area variance for maximum density to allow a second unit. So there's two variances they're requesting.
Where am I, why am I missing this?
Andy, I think you're on the wrong applicant.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, you're on the, right, you're on the next one, 13th Street.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Nevermind.
Okay, all right, good. So the only thing they are seeking is the special use permit at this moment. Okay.
And, and an area variance for parking deficiency?
No, that's not, that's not what mine says.
Let's see the special use.
It's in the staff report.
Well, when you get it at 5:35, James, it's hard to concentrate on these things.
Yeah, understood, but I'll take, I'll take the blame for that one, Kathy.
Okay, that's fine, but tell us what else they need besides the special use permit?
Joe, you're not, you're not proposing any, any parking there. What, what is the parking that you're proposing there, just to clarify for us?
Currently, right now, we just go with the existing on-street parking. I mean, there's never been a short, next door is Koch's Auto Body Shop or Repair Shop. Across the street is vacant Mill, and there's really nothing, no other house on that, that block between Fifth and Sixth Avenue. So there's, there's an abundance of parking there daily.
Right, so as, as it was mentioned earlier, would be the, well, it would be the area variance for the parking, it would be two spaces.
So they do need an area.
Two spaces would be required.
So they need an area variance for the parking, is that what you're saying, James?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, so it's two spots in addition to the special use permit. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Katie. All right, since you're the one who read the staff report, Katie, you may make the motion.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2021-10.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the special use permit. I believe that this use will not, I'm sorry. It's not gonna cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood, character or a detriment, detriment to nearby properties. In fact, I believe just the opposite is going to happen. I don't believe it's a substantial request because it was, in the past, used for a, for one residence, and they're just proposing to add a residence instead of a storefront. I also make a positive motion to approve an area variance for a parking deficiency of two spots. Again, I don't believe that's a substantial amount, given the parking situation in the neighborhood. And I don't believe that either will change, cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood.
Okay, so do we have a second to those motions?
I'll second it.
Okay, John Normile? All right, and on the motion? I'm looking at all these names up here, they're not members. Mark Pelosi?
I vote in favor.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Jack McCann?
Yes.
John Normile?
Yes.
And Kathy Conroy, yes. Okay, Mr. Johnson, you have your variances, so good luck with that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, next case, PLZBA 2021-0011, area variance at 2313 Street. Graciela Monroy seeks area variances for parking deficiencies. Four spaces required, zero proposed, and exceeding density, the maximum allowed density is 21.5 units per acre, eight, yes, per acre. And is the applicant present?
You're muted, Graciela.
I don't even see her.
Oh, there I am.
You need a bigger screen, Kathy.
Hello?
I need a bigger screen?
Yeah.
Well, how come, Mark, you're always right in the middle here? I'm too old for this. Okay, go ahead, Graciela, where are you located?
Can you see me now?
Ah ha, there you go. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, you?
Good, good.
Okay, so now, tell us what you want to do.
So we are the architects for a client and owner, Terioma Stevenson. She's taking this vacant building and turning it into, or reviving it exactly as it used to be. She's proposing to increase the number of units. It was previously zoned as a three-unit building, but the basement was previously inhabited, and so we're proposing to add the fourth unit in the basement. It's a walkout basement. It would be a one-bedroom unit at the ground floor. So that's why we're seeking the, you know, rezoning for a four-unit building and seeking the variance for the parking and density.
Okay, so it used to be, you used to have the fourth unit basement in the.
At some point, you know, this building's been vacant for a while, but you can tell there's a fireplace and millwork and all this stuff down there, so.
Okay, so, and so now you're gonna redo that?
Yes, exactly.
Which takes care of the density part of it. It's next door to two other three-story buildings, is it not?
Correct.
Yeah, they're to the, to the west, I should say. And the last one, right next to them is the little parking lot.
Correct, that's right.
And.
Takes care of the parking, right?
Exactly right. Tell us, which leads me into the parking deficiency. Now, why, why do you need to have that variance?
So the lot itself, you know, doesn't really allow for parking. There is a rear yard, but we would see the benefit of green space over providing parking for, for four units. And in this type of density, urban downtown, people understand you park on the street, and it's a walkable city. So they expect mostly students to be renting here anyway, walking to RPI and using public transport.
Now, do they, do they, is the building currently inhabited?
No.
Okay, so it's totally vacant?
Completely vacant, yeah.
They're gonna rehab in some way, or whatever, they're gonna clean it up somewhat.
Yeah.
And then they're gonna rent them all, all of the units?
Yes.
Okay. And most of these renters, you presume, will be going to RPI?
Would think, just because of the location and the types of units, but, you know, it could be families, but that's what she hopes the owner is to have students renting.
How about the other two? Do you know anything about them, the west, to the west of them? Do they, are they inhabited now?
They are inhabited, from what I understand, and they are mostly RPI students as well.
Okay. All right. Does anybody on the board have any questions for this applicant?
Does, does the property owner have rights to that parking lot?
I believe, I think it's public. It's my understanding that it is public, and the parking in front of it is public as well, so no specific rights, but, you know, able to use it accordingly.
Okay.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, my, it's a stupid question on my part, but if it's a city lot, anybody can park in there, right? You probably don't need a permit, right, James, like you would in the city?
We have no mechanism for a permit at that lot.
Yeah, so anybody can park in there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
As I understand.
Yeah. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak against it? Okay, do we have, does anybody have any further questions or clarifications you want from the applicant?
I just wanted to, I'm just gonna point out that, you know, in my calculation, 21.5 units per acre is what the zoning code gives us to work with. For a lot of this size, it, it, it's a pretty wonky, obviously, it's a straightforward calculation, but it's a pretty wonky metric to use, and it came down to just over one unit for this sized lot, which doesn't seem to make any sense, in my opinion, for an R3 zone. So just considering that, when we're talking about the density, I feel like the, the current standard in the zoning code is in a, it, it doesn't really match up with the, the land you use that's, or the structures that are existing in this zone.
So what you're saying is that if we, if she didn't need a variance, it would have been because this four-story or three-story building was really only good for one unit? That's kind of, it is very bizarre.
I'm saying the code, the code doesn't, the code doesn't do a great job of matching what's there.
Right, exactly. I mean, it's just unrealistic.
These structures are older than the code, so it's quite strange. And I think, my, I guess my real point is, I think that creates a need for the variance in a way that wouldn't be predictable for a landowner there.
Correct. But I suppose back in the day, it was only one family that lived in a three-story house, you know, a gazillion years ago, when they were built. All right, I got it. Do we have anything further for the applicant?
I just wanted to know, does the owner, has the owner considered, or has it ever come up to offer some kind of an incentive for tenants that perhaps don't bring a car, but, you know, ride a bike, or use the bus line for transportation?
Um, I'm sure the owner would prefer that, you know, to, to have that type of tenant. I don't know that she's, you know, the building is completely vacant, so I don't think that she's even considered, you know, what type of applicants yet. You know, she hasn't even started that process, but that's definitely a good point, and I'll definitely relay that to her. You know, she is looking for students that want to walk and would understand what downtown living is like, where you don't really have to use a car most of the time.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Or are we ready, Katie, for the secret?
Okay, Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2021-11, I ask the board find this proposal to be unlisted action with sufficient information available, upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, now we need a motion on the, on the application itself.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, Madam Chair, in regards to PLZBA 2021-0011, Well, Madam Chair, in regards to PLZBA 2021-11?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve based on everything that's been entered into the record at this meeting, the access to public parking next door, and the, the general character of the neighborhood in that it's, it's expected that most of the parking there is on the street. There's insufficient room, green space on the lot to add parking. So I'll recommend, or make a motion to approve.
Okay, and that includes the density, correct? Your motion includes the...
I'm sorry, yes, it does.
Yeah, the density, okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jack McCann seconds, and on the motion, Mark Pelosi?
I vote in favor.
Katie McLaren?
Yes, in favor.
Jack McCann?
Yes, in favor.
John Normile?
Yes.
And Kathy Conroy, yes. Okay, so your app, your client can move forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, if we have no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we'll see you all next month.
Okay. Bring weather, everybody.
Great. See you, James.
Enjoy, good night.